I'd like to call to order the Sagittalk Parks and Public Works Committee meeting of October 25th, 2022. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chair.
Here.
Dean.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said chair. I thought you said chair. Sorry. Chair is excused. We can start again.
Do you have?
Here.
Here.
You.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, do I have approval of the agenda? This will be a voice vote. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Johnson, second by Young. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jenna is approved.
Any opposed?
No.
Sorry.
No, I need the help. I appreciate it. No, I do. I do.
He's a newbie too.
I need, basically you should just have like an electric cattle prod and just keep hitting me with it.
Just like buzz.
Yes. A buzzer. Put a buzzer on the chair. Yeah. So, okay. So, we also have approval of the minutes from the September 27th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Good. Good. Motion from Kibble, second by Roche. Any discussion on the minutes? Any changes or additions to the minutes? Corrections? Any notice of errors? No? With that then, it's a voice vote to approve. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Approved unanimously. We now are at the part of our meeting where we will entertain a public comment on agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes and agenda items only. I don't see anyone in the room that wishes to address the committee. Is there anyone online that wishes to address the committee? See none. Concludes public comment, or at least our first public comment. And that takes us to item six, review and discussion. Item A, staff presentation on park improvement priorities. Over to you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation to walk us through a discussion today. And we will pull that up. Right, here we go. So, for the, for the agenda today, we want to talk about some of the projects that are active with the city of Sagittalk, stuff that we're working on. So, today we have a deep team here in the audience. I think you most, most of you know all of them, but let's just do a round of introductions. Scott Herbert first.
Hi, Scott Herbert, Public Works Superintendent. Yeah, as far as priorities, are we getting into the?
No, with just introductions, and I can do it. Okay. Yeah, just, you just like, you need to sit there. Ryan Cummins, just so you know, Glenn, I think you're the only one that maybe don't, does not know the, the team. So, Ryan is doing planning and zoning, is the project coordinator as well. And then we have Cody. Cody is the new assistant DPW supervisor. So, he's supporting Scott with some of the more administrative work. And then we have John Moxie, our engineer. So, he's part of our squad as well. And then.
But John, John, what's your last name?
Moxie.
Yeah, he works with Fleece and Vanderbrink, so he's got a long relationship with the city of Sagittalk. And we have Lisa Myes, who's with the CVB, so. Great. And so, we're going to talk about active, active projects, stuff that we have going on already. And then we're going to get into some projects that staff is recommending that the Parks and Public Works Committee start addressing. After that, we'll talk about who's interested in those new projects that are coming in front of us. And then we'll kind of wrap that up into some grant opportunities with some of those projects. So, that's, I think the main takeaway from, from the meeting today, Mr. Chair, would be to start understanding who of your committee members are interested in what projects.
That's exactly right. We've, we've had a few examples already. A couple of us had a chance to go on a, a visit on Park Street, for example. And it, once again, it just led, led itself to a great opportunity for the committee. We've had other discussions on other properties. I won't get to the punchline, but yeah, let's just carry on.
So, I think that's, yeah, one of the end results of today's meeting would be like, who's interested in what?
Yeah, and, and maybe even a little brainstorming. I mean, not, not to blow the meeting up, but a little bit of brainstorming on other resources that we might want to bring in to these work groups. Because just from the experience with the radar station, we found that, you know, there are a lot of specialists that may, may not even be city residents. They may be with the county. They may be our partners over in Douglas. They may be associated with the history center. They may be part of the school district or the community rec department. So, I'm hoping that we can have an open conversation about, you know, try to populate these with some of the best teams possible to tackle some of these projects we've got.
Cool. Okay. Next slide, please. Alright, so we'll talk about one, two, three, four, five of these projects in a little bit more detail. But the overview is that we are actively working on the Blue Star Trail multimodal path. We have a small project with an Oval Beach swing set. It's amazing how many details go into a small swing set. Then we'll talk about the Water Street sidewalk project, which I think starts today. Construction starts today on that. Invasive species, surveys and treatment, and then facilitating the malt bald head exterior repairs. And we'll talk about the volunteers that are working on that.
And just, just real quick, right, are you okay with the members sort of just jumping in?
Anytime.
Anytime.
Yes, please.
Or free flowing. Okay.
Yep, yep. Anytime you have a question.
How do you?
Address, yeah, the appropriate way to do that is actually to address the chair. It doesn't have to be super formal, like, Mr. Chair, like. But if we start talking over each other, which happens sometimes, I wouldn't expect that today. But as we get into like future discussions on some, some of the bigger projects, the, the appropriate way to do that is to, to address the chair. Yeah, just kind of flag your hand and he will acknowledge you. And I mean, it's a super formal way to do it, but it's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Whatever, whatever works. Yeah.
Yeah, but don't, again, don't be afraid of like the formality of, of these meetings. We just, we just try to be consistent through all of our, like council down through our commissions. And so, that's, that is the best way to, to do that, to address the chair with the question and then just jump in anytime. Not on this, not on this agenda, but worth mentioning is that last night, John Moxie was presenting a road asset management plan to our council. So, they do, they go throughout the city and they address the conditions of the pavement. And then they make recommendations to council based on the conditions. It's just worth mentioning because I'm sure that will tie into some other projects eventually. But for the most part, the Parks and Public Works Committee is, is focused on new projects, not kind of, which is different than ongoing operations and maintenance, meaning that like our road assets already exist. It's like heavily engineered. It's, it's kind of a science-y thing. And then our city council will address any particular concerns, like, so we do the science and then we make recommendations on road asset. And then the council will say like, well, then the small town politics get involved. And then council makes those decisions. So, I'm just trying to keep it high level with this Parks and Public Works Committee as far as projects moving forward.
Okay, one thought, and I'll help you explore this with you. I know, I, I'm just thinking of real world examples, you know. Ruth and I had a really good visit with the folks that live on Park Street. And, you know, obviously, the road is the big project, you know, fixing the road, making it, hopefully making it more safer and more accessible for everyone. But it did touch on sort of our Parks and Public Works, for example, you know, a, a big first step, we thought would, to make it a little bit safer for people to cross from the chain ferry to the Woolham Trail. So, that does sort of have a connection to, to that. So, you know, and obviously, for me, I think Helen, sorry, Ruth would be a great resource to interface with that community that has very specific concerns about how people use the parks and how they, you know, also use the infrastructure to get to the parks.
And the movement of traffic, the movement of people. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just, that's just one example where I think there might be some overlap, but obviously, I, I agree with what you're saying in terms of, you know, the overall deep infrastructure stuff, you know, the water lines, all that stuff is.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's sciencey stuff, but like I said, yeah, it does tie into some of the other projects. And when it gets to city council, I know there are some concerns in that area. So, that's a perfect example.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh, let's see where we are. Next slide, please. Alright, so some of the active projects. Again, I'm trying to keep this high level. And so, Blue Star Trail status, if you're not familiar with it, it's a partnership between City Village of Douglas, City of Sagittalk, Township of Sagittalk. This project goes way back. They've been trying to get a connection from Sagittalk Township to Douglas for, I think, over a decade now. And so, there's been some, some great progress. What we're really talking about is, and then I, I should also mention that we do have a member on the Friends of the Blue Star Trail on your committee, which was announced at our previous meeting, but we're talking about 1.15 miles of new trail. The engineers that are helping with the project, the preliminary design is complete. It meets all the state and federal standards. We have two grants submitted. Of those two grants, the Transportation Alternative Program, which is a federally funded grant. We do, we do have a verbal commitment that we're going to get a good chunk of change. On the next slide, I think I have some of the dollar amounts, but we don't, well, well, that's okay. I queued you in, yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll get back to it. And then we have another one, which is the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant, which we just recently received our scoring on that. Our engineers feel pretty confident that we're doing very well with that grant as well. And then if you have not gone to the Friends of the Blue Star Trail website, I would encourage you to do so. They have a wonderful maps of exactly where these trails are at, what's going on, their long-term vision. And so, I'll just pause there before we get to the next one.
Does, do you work with this? Do you work with that Riverview Council? Are they together at all on this?
Not really.
Okay.
No. I mean, the meetings that I've attended, you know, with the Friends of the Blue Star, there's, there's been, there's, there's awareness, you know, the group is out there.
Just kind of like us.
Right, but you know, yeah, there has.
Got it. And I'm on that one. I like that one. Yeah.
Alright.
We concentrate on footprints. Got it.
Yeah, if you, if you just want to jump over to the next slide, thank you. Just some, some high-level numbers. Working left to right, the, the total project cost is $2.2 million on this project, 15% of which is engineering costs. City of Sagittalk's portion of that is 1.13 million. The township would be kicking in 1.07, 1.08. And then working down from there, you know, as I mentioned, we're pursuing some grants, which we feel pretty confident about at this point. So, 1.3 would be coming in from the federal grant, which is the Transportation Alternatives Grant. Going down from there is the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund. The township and both the city applied for 300 apiece, so that's, that total 600,000. And then we have a local share of 265, so it totals 2.2 million. And then dropping down from there, we have our local share breakdown. The city of Sagittalk kicked in $50,000, are willing to kick in $50,000. Township is holding steady at $10,000. And the most really important is the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. They're in for a couple hundred grand, which is amazing when you have a friends group that can, can raise that type of money. So, the local share breakdown is 265,000. And again, so it's kind of wait and see right now with our grants, but again, we're, we're feeling pretty confident and happy to address any questions. So, this, on the number break.
Yeah, you know, this is dependent really on four different parks. Sagittalk and the township getting the tap grants and the other grant. What happens if one of those doesn't come through?
Then you're going to have to look back at your municipalities and, you know, wonder if they are willing to step up with their own general funds or willing to issue a bond, or there's many different options. So, if a grant falls through, which would be unfortunate, yeah, you have to go and see what your local municipalities are willing to do to keep this project moving forward.
I've, I've given the amount of infrastructure money that's floating around the state right now. I'm pretty optimistic, but obviously, I think it happened. I don't know if you're going to get to that, this Ryan, but maybe just 30 seconds on how you think maybe a subgroup of, of this committee would, would be useful in interfacing with the project.
Next slide, please.
Oh, sorry.
So, I think what, what's going to be most important as far as the committee level work on this project will be some of the design aspects of the bridge aesthetics. So, you know, we have our basic engineering of like the dimensions of the, the bike trail width and the road. That was a long discussion that, that we've gone through, but there's going to be some aesthetics on like the, again, like the, the, the bridge itself. So, that's one example. And as far as pillars, like if you drive through Douglas, I guess, as a better example, and you can see is like some of the barriers that they put in and some of the markers that they've placed, that would be some of the discussion that this group would have. A lot of the boardwalks that are going to be required in our bridges across some of the wetlands. I mean, that's just like some basic engineering, but there's also some nice amenities that this committee can certainly discuss as far as places to like take, you know, get off the trail and have a seat, like benches and that, that sort of thing, or educational signage. So, those are the aesthetics and some of the finer details is what the committee would be working on and then make a recommendation to city council ultimately. And that, that's an, that's an important thing because I know a lot of people are concerned about that, especially the bridge.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the Douglas example was controversial and it's been tweaked, I think, a number of times. So, obviously, we want to find a way to avoid having to do a lot of tweaking, just get it right the first time.
We'll be doing it, yeah.
I should also mention, sorry, go ahead.
So, as far as the grants and everything that's been done so far, I know the lead has been with the city council. So, that will continue on and then you just foresee this group doing, you know, this portion of it, or will that also be rolled in eventually?
Yeah, I would just see this committee working on design aspects. Yeah, mostly focused on aesthetics. Another example of that would be like the pallet sign. So, that's kind of a, a question right now. Can the, how does the, how does the trail interface with the pallet sign? Can, can the trail go underneath the pallet sign? Does the pallet sign need to be moved? If you move it, there will be trouble. So, so, you know, those are some of the things that, yeah, that, that I foresee this committee working on.
Yeah.
With the help of our engineers, of course, you don't have to do this in isolation. Yeah.
I think, once again, you know, you know, being able to combine the engineering solution and the safety solution with sort of the overall vision and aesthetics that I think this group has a good, will, I think, and already does have a good handle on. So, I think, like, would be useful in that regard.
Correct. Okay, so that's Blue Star Trail. Any, any other questions on that? Alright, next slide, please. Alright, Oval Beach Swing Set. Mr. Herbert, you want to join this discussion? So, we had a generous donor that Scott's been working, and our whole team has been working with. And so, we're, we're pretty excited about that. So, just kind of the, the process that goes into this and how close are we, are we to getting this installed?
Yeah, so, so the way I understand our donation policy is that if someone wishes to make a donation to the city, let's say benches were, were a big one for many, many years. And so, there'd be some sort of a memorial bench. Well, that, they would make the donation, that money would go into a fund. And then when the, the city is ready to purchase more benches, then whoever's on that list gets the priority over of the wordage, the language on that bench, as long as the city has the ultimate approval on it. So, we kind of expanded on that a little bit because we have a lot of benches. Not to say that we couldn't use more, we certainly could. Some of them could maybe be updated or be composite, but we thought, you know, if we have this very generous community that's willing to make financial contributions to the city, why not take it a step further from benches and try to actually kind of facilitate the donation with something that the city needs now. And in this case, we went with a, a swing set out of the Oval Beach. The one that's out there right now is in pretty rough shape. It's very dated and doesn't look very good. So, we, we had a Zoom meeting, Ryan and I did, along with Kate White, when she was working here. And we, the donators were fully on board with, with the swing set purchase. So, they donated a generous amount of money. And in which case, right now, we're in the process of getting it ordered and kind of some of the fine details of not having, you know, the, the memorial, the memorial aspect, aspect of it be huge. And how do you incorporate that into a, an item like this? And so, right now, we have it worked out.
It's actually going to be a six-seat swing set, so there's going to be a third set. So, you'll have this, like, the belt-style swings over here. The expression, I'm trying to get my terminology, playground terminology correct, but these are expression swings. So, we have a set, section of those, and then we have some zero-gravity swings, which kind of have like a, they're, they're, they're more inclusive and they have kind of a harness that goes over the, this child or whoever's in the swing. So, that's on order right now. And then I think the goal is, some of the donators want to have like a subtle memorial aspect to it. So, what we decided is maybe we order some decals that would just go in between each of the sections. So, there's three different people that are being honored with this donation. So, they'll have one decal for each of the three sections on that swing. The city, they got approval from the city on, on what the language would state exactly. And so, that's where we're at with it. That should be ordered this week and installed. It really just depends on when the weather is going to allow us to install it because it'll involve the public works. Basically, it'll get shipped in a, in a package and on a crate. And then Public Works will do the actual install. And so, we'll have to wait and see, hopefully do the install probably in the spring, so it doesn't get sandblasted all winter long. And then some fine tuning with, working with streamlined design on, on the, the decals for the memorial, memorial donation aspect of it. So, it's pretty cool. We're excited to have it.
Yeah.
It's really generous of, of, of the, the donators. They're, they're really easy and pleasant to work with.
I don't think it's a bad idea to kind of think in that direction, like if we have a project and we see something that calls for a certain amount of money. So, I'm sure of you all have worked on a lot of communities that people like to have their names on things, but not always a bench. So, I think this is a really great way to take it and the money for it to like find a project to put that money towards. So.
Yeah, and, and my, my, you know, my vision is to really just try to, you know, prove, prove to the community members that if you're going to make a generous donation to the city, that they're, they're really getting a professional quality end product that, that really does their loved ones justice too. So, this is a good example, and we're, we're trying to set the bar high so that maybe people will even help donate to like the kids playground or, or another swing set that needs to be constructed down at Village Square. So, hopefully, it takes us in good directions.
So, I do, I love this. And like what Ruth is saying is I, I love this idea of our group potentially moving forward with this and finding, you know, doing some marketing pieces so that we can get more endowers that would be interested in, in this and having a priorities list. So, I went to Oval last night because of this meeting and I just sort of wanted to see, I hadn't been out there in a bit. And I'm wondering with the spaces there, have we thought about with this going in and also putting in us, like a true playground area in that space? I mean, I don't know space-wise if that's possible. It sort of looked like it was. And you look at all the other, you know, beaches up and down. Like Michigan, everybody does have that now, and they've put in newer playgrounds. So, I'm just curious if, you know, this is already done. If we can put it in a way where we can add to it, and if this group is doing those types of, you know, endowment things, then.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good long-term kind of thought. And there, there is a decent amount of area up there. You know, it, 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 it could use a little bit more, nothing, you know, the way it's designed right now, we couldn't have, you know, massive playground by any means. But I do, I do see having a little bit more space for, for other things there, certainly. But we did just have the history center too. I think Scott, Chairman Dean and I met with the Historical Society out there and they're, they're going to install, I think, this spring also. One of the, kind of the, the three-panel size, signs that they've installed around town. Oval Beach was selected as one of their new locations for that. So, we're going to see that in that same general vicinity too. But, but certainly, yeah, it's, it's worthy of exploration for sure.
That's what I was going to bring up. There's, there's sort of two pieces that we also probably want to think about. And Scott pointed this out to me when we were out at the beach with the history center guys is, Scott mentioned the, the metal sort of history sign, which is consistent with the other ones we have along the, the riverfront. And we wanted to make sure that was, you know, as far away as possible. So, if somebody's not going to launch themselves off the swing and into one of those metal.
Yeah.
Edges of that thing. And then the other thing Scott pointed out to, to me, at least when, when we were on that tour, was there is some dune grass to the north side of the swing set that I think you're hesitant to move.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we, we're not very popular people when we start excavating out dune grass. So.
But no, I, I think if, if there's other, if, if it can safely be fit, I, I, yeah, absolutely.
But it's also important too to get, you know, get somebody who's, you know, like CPSI certified, like a playground company to, you know, for, for example, one of the ideas before we land, before the donators, before we landed on the idea of the vinyl or decals on the swing set, we talked about having some sort of like a little bracket fabricated with like a metal sign up above it. And that's a no-go because that doesn't meet safety standards. You're not allowed to have anything up above like 84 inches or something of that nature above the swing. So, having a professional service come in that's, that specializes in that area, come in and work with us closely would be very important.
But yeah, I, I think if, if we can do more, obviously, I think it'd be great. That's, it's a really nice spot. I mean, that's why we kind of like that little corner by where the garbage can is currently, because it's, it's sort of where people line up to use the concession. And it gives them a chance to kind of, you know, learn a little bit about the history of the place while they're waiting in line. And I'm sure a lot of parents, you know, one of them's in line getting snacks for the kids and somebody else is entertaining them. So, it's, it's a good, I think it's a decent spot for it. I mean, to build on that if we can.
Yeah.
Really, really, there's not too many places at Oval Beach that lends itself to, to playground equipment like that, just because of our beach is awesome, but it has that slope. And, you know, like Holland State Park, they have volleyball nets and it's great. They have a lot of real estate to work with. We don't have that. We have our own uniqueness out there. But that spot would be one of the very few.
Yeah. So, is this going in the exact same spot where the swings are now?
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah. But we'll, we can definitely do the installation in a way that kind of future planning, leave some space to where if we could add, you know, something, a little extra something there, we'll, we'll keep space for that.
Yeah. And have you already picked out the colors and everything?
Yes. It's been a long, long. This is actually, I, I can, I can send an email about, it's, it's the, Douglas has a swing set really similar to this, the same frame color and everything. But we chose a sky blue frame and then the expression swings and the zero-gravity swing frame. Those are going to be beige because it just kind of lends itself well to the, the Oval Beach atmosphere out there.
There was, yeah, there's an internal staff, I'll call it, a discussion. So, we all actually got a vote. I was outvoted, but that's okay.
But beige, that was, and there will be beige on the, on the, on the swing set. So.
So, no, it was a big discussion. So, we had a palette, I don't know, six, well, just 60 colors or something. And then, so, yeah, we wanted to blend in with the lake and then also, but not too, not too matchy-matchy. And then that's when we got in the whole discussion. So.
I think Douglas, they have the, the sky blue frame and they have like their, their zero-gravity swing. The chair is like orange, so kind of school colors, which was great. We just kind of felt that beige and, and blue was a, a good fit for the lake shore.
Nancy, did you? I just had a question about, would that just be on the sand or will there be any kind of a surface?
Just sand.
Just sand, because it gets really hot.
Yeah.
As a, having had my grandchildren there.
Right.
And I just wondered if there was any consideration to doing anything.
It'll be next to.
Anything you put there would just get covered with sand, probably. So.
Essentially, yeah.
Nature has a way.
But it is kind of skewed over towards a wooden walkway that has some maintenance issues. There's a, I think, a big cottonwood tree. The, the roots are buckling that structure. So, that, that needs to be looked at at some point fairly soon, I would say. But the swing set is in pretty close proximity to that for relief.
So, Mr. Chair, we have a whole separate playground discussion later on in the agenda.
Okay.
Where we can really have this committee take a deep dive.
Okay.
Not today, but maybe a subcommittee of people who love the playgrounds. But I do want to mention. Uh, not today, but maybe a subcommittee of people who love the per- playgrounds, but I do want to mention uh donations again. Um, you know, when the when this group reached out to us, they wanted a memorial bench, which is very natural, very like, you know, it's a reflective space, and we totally get it. I I I remember taking a picture of my daughter Vivian on a bench by Peterson Preserve. She looks so cute, but like right above her, like in big bold letters is like in memorial of like, you know, whomever that was, and my parents were like, who is this person that is like memorialized here? And I'm like, yeah, no, I don't know, they're like, I kind of ruined the picture, but I was like, oh yeah, but it was a good gesture that they put in this bench. So we we are going to push donors towards projects that you align with and the City Council aligns with. Um, this is a perfect example of that. Also, I want to mention, because Lisa's here, um, that the CVB is also willing to participate in costs, and maybe Mister Chair, if it's appropriate, you can call Lisa and see kind of where the CVB is at and and what they're willing to help out with, and in as far as donations towards to to the city.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Do you? Sure, if it's a great game, Mister Chair, this is.
Just one other thought for Scott, while I've got his attention, oh, you don't have to get, but yeah, um, just um I think, you know, a great project, I think, and um a great, great input from everyone. I think just based on our past experience with donations that change anything in this town, it's really useful to have kind of a quick elevator speech on why it needs to change. Uh, I'm thinking about a a project where we had a very generous donation that was pulled back because people didn't like the change, so if if there are any safety, maintenance deficiencies in the current swing set, I think as we move forward, it'd be great to have those identified. So when people do say why, you know, I my kids always swung on the giant one, and they were able to get, you know, twenty feet of air before they landed in the sand or on the concrete, we at least we can say, well, that would you know, yeah, and and yeah, your kids used to have jarts too, so, you know. So I just anything you can i- identify in terms of deficiencies, maintenance, safety, otherwise, I think it might smooth the conversation was, because people, people give are very nostalgic about a lot of things, and I and I, for very good reasons, but.
Absolutely, for sure, there's a lot too uh that we could talk about as far as like the maintenance deficiencies at the kids playground, which we'll save for.
That's coming up. Okay.
There's there's good reasons for the, you know, the upgrades that need to happen out there, so, and and most of them revolve around public safety.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Um, the CVB has done a strategic planning about, I think it's almost two years now, and part of the strategic plan was um the development of tourism-related assets for the communities, uh Sagatuck, Douglas, and Fenville and the township. So they, we, the board, is in a unique position, I think, this year, and probably hopefully for the next couple of years, that we they've never been in before, where there's a sizable amount of money that can be granted to a municipality or a group that is looking to do something along these lines. So we're happy to um have that those funds available, and I'm happy to help. Um, we're probably gonna come up with a grant application, which is on my to-do list, and um we can go from there.
Yeah. Okay, um, thanks Lisa, uh moving on, please, next slide. Uh, something that we're also actively engaged in is invasive species, uh surveys and treatment. Uh, pretty thrilled that Elegan County um is participating and doing a survey for um the HWA bug, which is the hemlock woolly.
Adalgit.
Thank you so much. Um, is that spelled, is not spelled correctly?
No, uh. Close enough for for a non-scientist.
So, and then also, there's a meeting that's being set up to address uh through the Elegan County Conservation um to address knotweed in the area. Um, and when I first arrived here a couple of years ago, Elegan County Conservation District was kind of nowhere to be found, we were working with Ottawa County. Um, however, what I'm noticing is that Elegan County is being well resourced at the moment, not only with um their Conservation District, uh but also with their telecommunications, and then also with their emergency services, so uh I can tell that there's there being, uh yeah, there there's some change going on there, uh which is wonderful, so it seems like they have a nice team set up, they've already um reached out me, reached out to me to get some mapping for addressing the HWA bug, which I know a lot of people in the community wanted to address. Um, I asked them to be very patient, they have been mostly patient. Uh, but finally, we're at a point where uh now we can rely on our county resources as a partner to uh to to get this addressed, which is awesome. Knotweed as well, Scott, Herbert and I uh have talked about knotweed um for the last couple of years, and addressing that, it's one of the most invasive uh plants um as far as their aggressive, it's aggressive nature, and then kind of lifting infrastructure, getting into pavement, and just just pretty wild invasive plant. Uh, we've also talked about uh other species like uh the uh purple loose drive, um and um fragmities, and so those two are on the list, and so I think we're just, well, this group can help us with slowly slowly working into a strategic plan to to address those issues, so, but it's good to have our county partners really stepping up. Um, so I won't spend too much time on that, but I
I think Nancy does.
I just had a question, um, will that address just the public areas of the city? What, I mean, if if the bugs are on private property, they're just gonna come right back, I mean, is there any thought about that?
Yeah, so the 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 strategic planning on that would be to educate private landowners and provide resources to them to also address the HWA at the same time, that's already happening. Uh, so we already partnered with private landowners o- in the the Oval Beach area. Um, but that needs to continue, just education, provide them resources. Uh, it gets really tricky where wherein you can't spend public dollars and private land, so the best thing that we can do is just educate people and let them know what the what the grand scheme is.
Would it, right, would a good example, though, of of the public-private piece be um when we uh went after the Eurasian mill foil in the lake, and didn't we have a few condo owners or dock owners that that threw in some money into the contract so that so the the vendor could do a larger swath, do I remember that correctly?
Yeah, that's that's correct, I mean, but however, but but and however, that was still in on public waters. Um, so, I mean, it's it's a, it's a tricky balance, I mean, um, so I I've worked on, I've worked on a similar scheme in in Door County, Wisconsin, wherein again, we provide resources, educational resources, and or allow them to contact for economies of scale with the vendors that are doing our treatment, and say, here, here are the people that are doing the treatment, we highly recommend that you join in, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um. Next slide. Mount Bald Head. Uh, the Mount Bald Head area, so this slide, so fir- first, a big thanks to the the Mount Bald Head, Friends of the Mount Bald Head Work Group who have done amazing work on 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 the the building itself, at the top of the top of the hill um and the surrounding area, securing the fence, and then taking care of some of the graffiti on 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 the buildings, so they've been doing some amazing work, Scott, Mister Chair, I don't know if you want to jump in at this point.
Well, I I guess, yeah, it's it was an amazing team, and really, I I a lot of that team's work has been the inspiration for I, what I think could be a effective way for some of these work groups that spin out or or are off of this hub of the of the Public Works Committee. And first, I've seen that conceptual master plan, I'm assuming this was very, this was done quite a long time ago.
Two thousand and six.
So, okay, so, yeah. And it looks like it was done, it looks like it was done by a University of Michigan, by a Michigan State student with an unlimited budget.
They need to get them back.
Because I don't, I don't, just for for just to be really a hundred percent clear, I don't think there's any intention now to to tear down the radar building next to the, next to the tower, and we now we have AT&T coming in, so there's obviously a lot of changes here, this was obviously very much a a blue sky exercise.
Yeah, they do, um, because I went to Michigan State, they do projects, I went up north on Old Michigan Peninsula, so you've got unlimited resources, unlimited ideas, and then they put it down to about this and take one or two ideas.
So I think I I'm glad you.
That's what, that's what we do, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what this is, Ruth, it's not a, it's no, by any means, a fait accompli or even close, but.
No, the the purpose of this slide, for the record, and anyone watching.
I like that, I I'm glad you put that in there, because I've never seen the Michigan State project.
No, I thought it was fun when I saw it too, and it was, well done this.
Shocked at first, I'm like, whoa. Yeah, it is thought for folk, and it pulls out some ideas, yeah.
Uh, but the purpose of this slide is to illustrate that the people have been thinking about redoing the Mount Bald Head area for quite some time, two thousand and six, next slide. This is, I think this plan was developed in two thousand and sixteen, so a decade later, new ideas, new vision. Uh, I think this is F and B's product, um, and, you know, maybe by the next decade, twenty twenty-six, we can two thousand and six, two thousand and sixteen, twenty twenty-six.
I don't think that's really funny to the public.
Anyways, um, yeah, so there's been a lot of ideas for a long time. Um, some, I I so there there are some some catalysts for moving these these projects forward, not only do we have AT&T
Yeah.
um, who are very much vested in uh running infrastructure up to the Mount Bald Head Radar Radar Tower, that's gonna come with some basic infrastructure in as far as the housing that they need for their equipment. Um, and and so as of yesterday, sorry, Scott, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, but this was yesterday, and we had meeting after meeting after meeting, but they they had with, I was rapping with these guys from AT&T, the engineers, and they were like, instead of putting infrastructure on the top of the the ball, the top of the hill to house our, what we need to run the cellular service, how about putting it on the bottom? Um, and I said, well, yeah, maybe, um, what are we talking about, you you know, we talked about the square footage of what they would need. Said, you know what, that's not a horrible idea, because we need, actually, we need new restrooms there anyways, so maybe we can just house all this stuff in one well-designed building. Um, and they were like, yes, yes, we can do this thing. So, so we do, we do have some things that are pushing us forward, not only the the Park Street redo, but also just, you know, the bathrooms are not, they're rustic. Pot and soil, for the record. Um, so yeah, I mean, there's an immediate need, and we have the pavilion there, and that is also very decrepit. Um, so I think this, this is one of the things that we need some some help with with the committee and our breakout group to help design, but we, you know, we do have some initial plans, one thing the government's really good at is like develop, no offense, John, uh, is developing plans and then shelving them and forgetting about them, and then redoing plans again, but I think there are some things that we can pull off of some of the old plans kind of cherry picking some of the good ideas that you see, so I'll just pause there.
Well, and I I was, if I could add to it, I I was, I was thrilled when you, when you told me about this last night at the end of the council meeting, you know, um, this is a great example of, you know, when this committee kind of puts together like these plans and sort of the vision, so when we do have somebody that comes in and says that, you know, I I'm willing to pay to put in some infrastructure for for my customers, in this case, AT&T, to be able to identify what, you know, you know, this is a historic site, we we want to take care of it, it's on the national, it's gonna be on the National Register, so you know, yeah, you can put stuff inside it, as long as we can preserve it, and then when they come back and say, well, it's easier for us to maintain like, you know, whatever it is, you know, the utility closet size, you know, little doghouse where where all the computers or whatever go, to have that conversation, to say, well, save your guys three hundred and two steps, you know, you know, every every time they have to go service something, and by the way, we need a bathroom, you're, you want to build something, maybe we can make it look attractive and be dual purpose. So once again, creating the infrastructure that serves multiple purposes. Uh, you you know, it could be, it could be really huge for that, for that location, that's that's a you know, sore spot with a lot of folks that use that park, is the state of the bathrooms there. Um, so, once again, I think, go ahead, Scott, yeah, please, get, yeah, please.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the big, the big issue for like the telecommunications companies is access to the site, so when equipment malfunctions, there's a storm, whatever happens, you know, are they, the logistics of it, so uh another area that may be worthy of consideration is the Reservoir Road. Um, you know, it it's got basically a, an asphalt milling road that can, it's very travelable. Um, that that might be an area too, to kind of protect our, you know, the parking space and whatnot at Mount Bald Head Park. Um, but also, you get a little, you gain quite a bit more elevation too, so um, it's not a site that I see the public accessing on a regular um frequent basis by any means, there's not much to look at over there, so. Um, but I think that might be, um, you know, a way to suit both needs. And then also too, just really quick with Mount Bald, I know we're gonna get to staff priorities, um, and so this may fall under that, but just a little background, you know, the Mount Bald Head steps, I think those were reconstructed somewhere around two thousand nine, so somewhere around there. Um, two thousand and ten, and there's some serious maintenance, maintenance issues with the steps, and Public Works, every year, we get um, you know, probably, ever since I've been superintendent for sure, which has been twenty seventeen, we get a a handful of complaints by people in the summer that the stairs are uh, there's some maintenance issues with them, and so uh, we've spent a significant amount of time, like digging sand out from underneath the steps, replacing stringers, um, doing all, doing that work ourselves to try to keep them safe for the public, and it it really is getting to a point where it it's getting beyond basic repairs that the Public Works can make, so I I would just, uh, my pre- my professional opinion is I would, I would uh urge you to consider this project uh sooner rather than later, uh in terms of priorities and spending money as a moving forward, so.
Thanks, Scott, and that, and I, once again, I think that's consistent with feedback we've gotten in the past two years of community surveys, I mean, it's I think it's been identified as a top priority, uh, the steps, and I, and the deck at the top as well, so, go ahead, Kelly.
So what's the most difficult part as far as the upkeep for you guys?
The logistics, and and the amount of time, so this always happens during the summer, when we have a million other maintenance oper- uh maintenance issues going on with the city, for me to dedicate one or two other full-time employees that are fully capable of doing repair work, um, you know, sometimes it can take uh several days, and that's a, that's a significant percentage of my crew. Um, and and so, and it's always during that, those peak moments, you know, right before Fourth of July, or or right before some huge special event, Venetian, whatnot. Um, that's when, you know, that's when these things start to happen, so it it's uh, and and it's not just like throwing a screw in, you know, to tighten up a a decking board, it's like the stringers and the posts going into the ground. Um, you know, we we could do a tour sometime, but uh but the the whole structure, the the railings getting pulled apart, I could go on, so, um, it it's just the sheer amount of time that it takes.
Yeah, I don't know if we have time today, but I mean, I'd love to hear from you in a perfect world, what you would like to see as far as long-term maintenance and things, as we're trying to make decisions.
Yeah, that'd be great, I think, um, well, well, in a perfect world, composite decking, uh, maintenance-free composite decking and and uh powder-coated framing. And so, but yeah, no, it to, it it'd probably have to be some sort of blend between, you know, realistic costs and uh and what we could get for the the money, but I I do know, it's like, I don't know, it's like modern lumber just doesn't last the way that it it used to, I think they were, um, it's possible that they wood may have been treated with different harsher chemicals uh in the past than it is today, and it just doesn't last, so uh, you know, I think everyone's really disappointed with the short lifespan that that structure had seen before it started uh needing really extensive repairs. But as you walk up the steps, there's a whole, and and really, um, you know, I I'm not, you know, not a hundred percent sure if we need to be kind of inspected and certified at some point, I I would think um for the integrity of the structure, that um that may be getting a little bit overlooked right now, so. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa, yeah, we're freestyling, yeah.
Always, anywhere.
Same as, same as the sidewalk, yeah.
And yeah, anywhere. Yeah, that exists everywhere and anywhere, um, yeah, it's a long story, um, so.
I think if if the committee doesn't have anything else on this, they'll turn it back to you, yeah.
Yeah, I will mention that Michigan State also, with their two thousand and six plans, uh, introduced, introduced, uh, I have some drawings for new stair system and new decking, um, so again, we can pull those those plans back out. Uh, but it is a priority for us, it's a concern.
Yeah.
All right, next slide, please. Uh, act, this is probably, uh, let's see, yeah, the last of the active projects that we have going is the Water Street Sidewalk, so this is a sidewalk that connects um Willow Park to, Scott, help me. Starve Sagatuck, so it's been a historical disconnect, um, so again, that project is active today, um, so I can't wait to go check that out. And then I'll just, I'm gonna float this out there, and I won't tell you who I heard it from, Scott Herbert. Eventually, possibly, can Eventually, possibly connecting the sidewalk from Willow Park all the way down to Holland Street.
Yeah.
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 That would be a big safety improvement.
It would, yeah, people are walking down the street, so there, there's quite a bit of. I will say, from city manager brain, there's quite a bit of space that there could be a sidewalk installed. I'm sure the property owners would not be one hundred percent thrilled, but, and so it goes.
Why, keep people safer.
Well, exactly, safety first. All right, so that's the end of the, uh, presentations on our current active projects. And now we have some new projects that we'd like the committee to get involved in. These are kind of our, the priorities that, that we see. And so Park Street, all right, we touched on that. We'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more, Village Square Playground and Park, um, Blue Star Trail. We already talked about that, so we won't spend too much time in the airport property. Next slide, please. All right, Park Street Project, as talked, as discussed earlier, the city's been looking at that for quite some time. Long, long history of wanting to make that multi-modal friendly, so bikes, pedestrians and, and vehicles. Hoverboards eventually, I'm sure. City conducted a, uh, survey of the roadway that was completed two years ago, three years ago, I think. Mr. Moxie said, right, yeah, right before I started, so that's like two, 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 two point five years. And I, I think the results of that survey are, are quite complicated in that, uh, the city's right of way. Uh, it meaning that where the, the city thought they owned property actually traverses over private property. And I mean, it's a very historic, very old road. And so there's a lot of logistics to work through in as far as what the city can actually do and/or acquiring property easements, temporary easements. I mean, it's, it's just pretty complex and I can let John, John speak to that briefly if, if, if you want, Mr. Chair. And then also just my last point on this is that I think Park Street requires a very, very, very thoughtful discussion on widening the roadway, uh, the, the roadway with. With all, also traffic calming measures, because what we have experienced on Campbell Road, just as an example, and just throughout my urban planning and my history of roadway projects. You widen the roadway and you smooth out the road, vehicles are going to travel much faster. So if speed is an issue now, redoing the roadway, widening the roadway, not only dealing with the complications with the private landowners, but just doing that alone will cause vehicles to just. It's just human nature, will cause vehicles to drive much more, much more quickly. So I, you know, it requires a very, 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 very thoughtful discussion.
And on that, that is a, it is a gateway to a ton of things. And we need to be safe, but we need to also retain the integrity of that character of that site. And it could be just as simple as just grading the side and having walk space, but we'll talk about that another time. I'm just saying, there's simple solutions that don't require huge money.
Thanks, Ruth, and, and did you want, John?
Do you want, did you want to talk about the survey, just like how wild it is?
Just for a little bit of context, when the city, uh, decided to, uh, look into North Park Street, north of Mount Bald Head. What we found was there was no official public easement right of way, nothing up there. You know, back in the day, things just kind of got built because there were cottages up there that needed water service, they needed sewer service, somebody had to build a road to get to them. So, um, the, the city acquired an easement, a very narrow easement going up North Park Street. So the, the issues on the rest of Park Street, not that bad, but it's, it's an old, old right of way and the road was kind of built path least resistance. So sometimes it's way over here, sometimes it's way over here. So, yeah, just trying to balance all of that, especially where you get up near Perryman there, Holiday Hill, it doesn't match at all. So, yeah, there's issues that'll need to be, get worked through. Obviously, we'll want to, as we do a project, we want to make it right so that going forward, we've got, you know, what we need. So, yeah, definitely some challenges there.
Thanks, John. I, I, I think on, on this one, you know, based on, um, correct me if I'm mis, misstating it, but, you know, based on what the feedback I got from Park Street residents a couple of weeks ago. It, it seems like, you know, we all, we all agree that, you know, the gold standard would be separating people from vehicles. That would be the gold standard, but we just, I'm not sure we can get there anytime soon. So I, I, I got a sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, a lot of the residents there would be okay with, you know, the eighty percent solution, which would be just where it can be sensibly widened. And, but striped in, in such a way. And I think, I think they, they use some tricks on Campbell Road to try to keep it calmer in terms of traffic speeds. And maybe it's even, even the way the road, you know, maybe me, continues to meander in a certain way. You know, so, so we, we, we could end up with like little bottlenecks, but then little like almost kind of. Safety zones for, for pedestrian or a bicyclist just to wait for a car or vice versa.
I, I think the biggest thing on that road is like, is just to slow the traffic down. Cause we, you know, I, I, I live on three nine N Park Street, big awful hill. And it, it's just to slow those people down because we work with the people that go fifteen, twenty miles an hour. And it's not scary, but that twenty-five miles an hour, that's scary when you're walking a dog, when you're pushing a stroller. But there's, like you just said, you know, you would just have to go out there and physically walk it.
Yeah, and I think just something to put in, in Scott's.
Yeah.
Mind is, is, you know, if there's a way to do traffic calming that also is seasonal. So it doesn't interfere with your ability to, to, to do winter activities such as plowing, you know, obviously we can't have speed bumps and plow effectively.
No.
So thoughts on, on.
But we don't have the traffic in the winter.
Precisely, precisely. So anyways, some thoughts on that.
Okay, that's going to be a complicated one, I can't wait for you all to work on that. And I will just mention this because I, my good friend, Mr. Gordon Neal-Lefort, we, we walked up and down that road, I don't know if you remember, Gordon. And, you know, I said, one of the best things you got going for you right now, Gordon, is all these potholes. Cause there's no better traffic calming measure than.
I actually lived in a community in the UK where they refused to have their road paved because, and it was like the Ky, it was like the Khyber Pass, but it kept people from. It kept people from parking on the road, it kept people from driving at any speed down the road because they literally let it turn into basically like a World War One trench.
And this is, yeah, I'm not so sure that the Park Streets residents aren't thinking the same thing. So we gotta be real careful with that.
Well, I think we're going to look at, to you a lot to.
Yeah.
To take the temperature and, you know, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that a part of the parks?
I mean, the.
Yes, no, I, I would absolutely love to be part of that, yeah.
Great, and then the, the follow-up conversation with Gordon was like, this really does need to be a grassroots efforts from your, your, your residents. We really need, if you're advocating for this, that we need you to kind of like, you know, not ta, talk to people. And he was like, oh, it's like fifty fifty, I'm like, oh, that's pretty typical for City of Saga Talk, so we need your help, basically. So if the residents want it, then they really need to get involved.
Absolutely.
Okay, next, please. All right, so Village Square Playground and Landscape, we need help with this one. So Scott Herbert, he's going to help me out with this, we have some pictures here. You know, I use this playground with my daughter Vivian, uh, we love it. She's only fallen off that little drawbridge twice. So, you know, when it kind of just generally meets the eye, it seems okay, right? Even my sister the other day was like, the park's fine, why would you guys redo that, however.
Yeah.
Scott.
I would love to talk to your sister. Better yet, I would love to meet anyone on site to go through some of this, this stuff. But, um, you know, there's a couple of things where you, you may look at some of these pictures, like, well, what's wrong with that?
You know, but for example, almost all wooden posts are either decayed to this point or they're, they're completely detached from, they're not even posted in the ground. So that's the, the point of this picture right here, the public works, we went out and, uh, you know, just put some braces around each of these posts. But a lot of them aren't even connected to the ground. And I think yesterday, uh, I grabbed a hold of this right here and shook that whole structure right there. And, yeah, and then another, another thing too, it's like, well, the coating on this picture here has been worn off, so there's some pretty sharp metal right here. And also the, the post, there's a post here and then one that would be up that way. And there's about a six inch plus elevation difference between each of those brackets, which tells me that that's how much decay there's been. And so that whole bridge is, uh, kind of going downhill towards the east. And what that does, the unevenness of it, that, that causes these to be pinch points. And so someone can really.
It needs to be replaced, so. So, and, and I could go on and on, you know, there, there's the swings, the, the chain links, they've been, I mean, this thing's probably, I don't, I don't know, maybe twenty-five years old, um, maybe more.
My kids are twenty-two and they played on that.
Yeah, and, uh, so like a lot of the links are, are completely worn, they're very thin. So it, it's, it's long overdue. I had, um, uh, I, I, like with the swing set, I work with a company called, uh, St. Clair Recreation, a guy named Jeremy, I hope you get to meet him soon, he's a great guy. He really wants to get involved with this, with this project and help do some design work for it. But, um, and, and that would maybe create some, using the same company might create some consistency throughout the city, you know, um, using some of the same equipment. But initially, I met him on site and he's like, wow, wooden posts, you don't see that anymore and, uh, on, on playgrounds. And so he's like, that dates it right there for me.
Is there, is there a price on replacing everything?
Yeah, we have, I mean, I got pricing, um, anywhere from like eighty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. But also too, uh, I, I'm always so jealous that Douglas, Douglas gets the garden club, they do such a great job over in Douglas. And so I'm always jealous of that kind of dedication. Our, our, the garden clubs does a lot of stuff for us too. But also they're, they have, they have this group, I talked to the Assistant City Manager Jenny and, and Rich over in Douglas. And they had this, this army of, they call it the Group of Moms, that they went out and they, they, they sought out funds and they got a ton of donations. And, uh, so I put a, a bug in, uh, the group of the moms, uh, ear a little bit that, hey, we, we want this too. So, uh, so hopefully we can, can get some assistance with that funding. But, you know, the project will really just be kind of, uh, you know, how, how much do you want to spend? You know, there's, there's the lower, more budget-friendly options all the way up.
Thanks, Scott, and I think, oh, go, look, Glenna, please.
Are, are we worried about these safety concerns enough to have somebody inspect it and see if it should be open?
Yeah, um, so I, I think if, to be really honest with you, I think if we had inspected, it would be red flagged all over the place. And so, uh, it really is time. And I think doing it now, where we, I've already done quite a bit of prep work for this. But, uh, doing it now and maybe getting it done before next summer would just be so perfect.
I'm, I, I'm very supportive, and go ahead, Kelly.
So I'm wondering if it needs to be done that quickly, if we take this opportunity to reimagine that whole, you know, four square. And if we want to look at moving the playground to the other side closer to the bathrooms. Cause I will say, when I had my kids at this playground, crossing there in heavy traffic and kids running out to the traffic, it's really scary. We had a couple near misses, so, you know, I mean, I love the park, I love where it is, but I also think in terms of if we're going to spend this kind of money and we need to reimagine, look at these, the spaces as a whole. As well, do we want to look at that now?
Yeah, that's a good point, and, and the design aspect of it, would love this group to dive in and, uh, and, and work with, uh, Fleas and Vanderbrink or, or Playground, uh, Equipment Personnel. Whatever, whatever it takes at this point.
I, 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 I think looking at it holistically is a very good idea. I mean, the, the, you know, it's, it's worth exploring, there may be something that suddenly becomes like a, a stop and then we need to once again work on things that, like we've done over the past year with the, um, the Bullard in, in the middle that tries to slow people down. Maybe we get more stops, I, you know, there's a number of things if we can't go that route. But for this committee, I really think, you know, the, the, the safety deficiencies are there. Once again, though, I think, you know, there's a great amount of, of sensitivity and sentimentality, which is perfectly fine in this community for changes. And suddenly if there's a bright, the colors are off or different park there, th- there, there will be people that will be, that will have issues with that. Is, you know, there, there will be allegations that it's changing the character.
Yeah.
Or the aesthetics of the town. So that's one that's going to really, I think, this group, not only the practical aspects, the safety aspects, uh, how kids recreate these days, but also what fits. You know, and, and is, you know, is acceptable to everyone, because some people, if it's like, if it looks like a McDonald's play area, people will go ballistic, so you know, yeah.
And that, and that's, that's a big part of it too, uh, Mr. Chair, is, is finding that balance. Because, you know, it, it makes perfect sense to look at something like the Plague, Village Square Park or Mount Bald Head Park holistically at the big picture. But the downside of that is that it bogs that project down, uh, significantly on time scale. So it's, it's kind of, uh, there, there's a pro and con to each.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're doing this now, but this would be a project I would be interested in looking on some committee on. So I spent my life getting kids physically active, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
I'm sure Scott, you've volunteered. Work group leader.
This is great. And, uh, Scott, Mr. Chair's points were, were wonderful, yeah, if you change the, the colors and the color scheme and the aesthetic and layout, that could cause other issues. But I think this is an opportunity to, to look at the four squares holistically. If anyone tries to get rid of that basketball court, they will be hearing from me and Scott Herbert directly. Whether having thoughts about, you know, taking that out, putting pickleball courts, so, you know, this is what this committee's for, and wrapping in those types of ideas. And then also, I mean, I'd lo, I'd love to see this, I mean, ADA accessibility is, that, that's, that's standard, that's, but we can, we can overdo that. In the, in the, in a good way. And then also like adult exercise space as well, not just, you know, if grandparents are out there taking their grandchildren, you know, something for them to do. But you would know far more about that than, than I would. So lots of opportunities here, I hope we do make this a priority and that's why we brought this to you.
I think, I think this committee would be more than willing to advance something to the council quickly. I think, I think, I, I think, you know, although I'm very sympathetic to, and I, I agree with, with Kelly's point of, of a holistic solution, particularly with the issue with the bathroom. But also this feels like a, it feels like a little piece of low-hanging fruit, if you will, in terms of we could actually put a really nice playground in this highly visible, highly visible center of town. Uh, when it's, you know, when it is sorely needed to, to be repaired, so.
So like first steps, would that, I mean, would that kind of be, go through engineering to get like a park plan for that? Or would that be more of like a, some renderings from a playground company? Or, you know, how, I guess, how, how can I get this going, is what I'm asking?
I'll take care of that with Scott Herbert.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay.
But you've got the feedback though from, from the, the committee in terms of, you know, the, look, try to look at the force, at the four squares, well, the, the intersection is a problem.
Intersection for the four square, not just the one going to the bathroom, but the whole thing. So then there's something just to look at as a whole, just that movement of traffic and people.
But, and the, I mean, some of it's way overutilized, some of it's way under.
Right, exactly.
Talking about the basketball courts. All right.
We'll bring the pickleball brigade too, so I'll think about that.
All right. Okay, next, next slide, please. Airport property, all right, so city's been talking about ideas for the airport property. If you do not know where the airport, does everyone know where the airport property is?
I don't know.
I have not been there.
I have no idea.
So we're driving down Old Alleghan and we go past some streets. Big old tree, you turn left.
It's, uh, sixty-third, so Tales and Trails Dog Park out on the township, it's off sixty-third street. I think that's a hundred and thirty-fourth avenue, and, and a hundred and thirty-fourth and sixty-third. Uh, the, the, the airport property is the, in, almost the entire east side of sixty-third street, all the way up from Fairview Farms, uh, where it opens up.
Oh, sure. You know, where Havener's is, you can just cross right there.
Highway going this way. Tales and Trails kind of right about in here somewhere, right?
Yep, exactly, it's over here.
Tales and Trails, but the highway's here, so an island of Saga Talk.
The ravines threw me off, like the juxtaposition of that, that's where I can't.
That's, that's just how vast of an area it is, it's that, it's that much property, so.
So it's about one hundred and seventy-ish acres?
It's two forty, but, okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll say one seventy.
This will definitely be a committee, uh, field, field, field trip at some point, it's, it's, it will blow your mind what's there.
I think it's the most beautiful part of Saga Talk, right back there.
At Silver Creek.
Yeah.
Cause in the Silver Lake.
A lot of it's usable, a lot of it's marshy clay, uh, but a lot of it is nice, nice sand, uh, good for trail, trailblazing, so.
So, can I jump in a little bit? I, I, the, the potential of this property and obviously it's a, it's a decision, decision for the council, but, um, you know, there's a room for a lot of interesting things there. A lot, number of us have talked about walking, hiking trails, we've also talked about the high, working with the school for a cross-country course, which they don't have their own home field, which would be wonderful. We've also talked about the high school, working with the school for a cross-country course, which they don't have their own home field, which would be wonderful. Kelly's done a lot of work with Community Rec, and we don't have fields for Community Rec, or dedicated space for Community Rec.
We're out of space, that's what it is too. We're out of space.
Out of space for Community Rec fields, um, you know, I would really love to see, personally to see Sagatuck get into the renewable energy space, uh, that could be, there could be areas within. Well, not, not only composting, but also, uh, there could be, there could be less desirable land for, for recreation that could be used for, for solar, for community solar. Um, I mean, back where I used to live in, in the UK, you know, the community used to have garden plots. Allow people to have their own, you know, leased garden plots. At two hundred and seventy acres, I mean, once again, we're getting into the really big stuff, but I, I, you know, Sagatuck does not have affordable housing. You know, you know, quality, small-scale homes and affordable housing, that's a huge thing, that's a huge thing, but this is almost like a blank slate, it's, it's almost like a blank sheet of two hundred and seventy acre wide paper, I mean, it's, it's massive. And it's just, I, I see a lot of potential, and there's already little pieces coming into play, you know, we had, was it ComEd come to us?
Consumers?
Consumers, sorry, consumers came in wanting to put in a substation, because there's a lot of problems with, with power outages in the township. Getting into the substation suddenly becomes sort of the gateway then to do things like, you know, facilities or, or that community solar array. Um, so there's, there's a lot of interesting things, it's, it's a big blank sheet of paper, but I think ton of opportunity, but it's gonna take a really broad look at what it could be for the community.
And if you want to look at trails connectivity, when you cross the road and then you're by Haveners, that can go into, um, trails that are back there by the dog park. And so that would be a nice connected trail from that area across the road into your.
Yeah, I think there, so isn't there a town, there's two other parcels that are owned by the township that are adjacent or about to this property as well, and I know they were interested in talking with Sagatuck Community Rec. Um, the director there has talked to the township, and they are also interested in having a collaborative meeting and saying, how can we use all these parcels?
Uh, on top of this, it's about equals. It's this way, um, so it used to be the Sagatuck Police Department, they had a shooting range, uh, over here for practice. Um, and so we do have about ten more acres, that's like about, approximately like this. Cross, as you go down a hundred and thirty-fourth towards Tales and Trails Dog Park, um, at the end, right next to the highway, uh, there's, there's the huge tower back there.
Yeah.
Um, to the south of that, that used to be a little landfill, and if you, uh, if you walk back there, um, you'll actually still see the PVC vent pipes for that are releasing the, whatever it is, methane gas or whatever's being released from the decomposition of all that junk, so.
Yeah, it's interesting connectivity, though, that, that could connect to some existing trails, because I think the township just did a trail in that old dump area, just kind of to the north of Tales and Trails, so there's, there's opportunity for collaboration, I guess, is, is the big story, yeah.
We also have one more kind of, uh, smaller issue, I guess, with it, but a lot of the surrounding properties, they have tree stands out there, and they're deer hunting, and they're, they're doing, they're trespassing on the property anyway. I have had the, I gave the DNR a key, uh, to the, to our gate, and just told them, patrol it whenever you want. Um, just to get people out of there, because if someone falls and breaks their leg on a tree stand, it could potentially be a liability for the city as well, so. People are already using it, you know, it's just, um, you know, I, I, I personally know of maybe about ten different tree stands out there. I, I, you know, so once in a while, like, uh, November fifteenth or whatever, I'll throw on an orange vest and go walk out there and see if anyone's hunting out there, but. I haven't found anyone, a lot of them look old, like the trees grown into them, you know, and they're, they look kind of abandoned, but it is an issue, so people are already using it, is my point.
Okay, lots of opportunity there.
I think, I think just, uh, Kelly, you, you've kind of expressed an interest in taking a deeper dive in this one. And, and Glenna for the trails as well, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm hearing lots of ideas about development, and what I see all over town is development, and it kind of concerns me that everything is going to be developed, and then we're gonna lose, to me, the appeal of the area is that we have a lot of, you know, nature. So just, you know, I guess I'd be interested in it from that standpoint, if let's not overdevelop it.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, uh, when I mentioned just the fact that Sagatuck doesn't have like places where people that like, you know, wanna live here but can't afford to, but, but are the people that work in the bars, restaurants, work for the city, work, you know, work in the schools, you know, I just, I would love for us to create an opportunity if you have this, you know, something, but obviously not two hundred and seventy acres, because I think.
Well, just by looking at it, you could see where that could even go close to the roads and stuff, or it doesn't, you know, it doesn't, wouldn't impede upon all the force and stuff, because I'm a hundred percent in agreement with you, a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's absolutely, I mean, we're thinking about more trails being.
Trails, right, and, and if we need soccer fields or whatever, is that kind of what you're getting at with?
Yeah, yeah, we're even on the multiplex.
I've got kids and grandkids playing soccer, so I, I support that too. Yeah, I, I think a little piece, maybe something to discuss, and I'm not married to the idea, but, because I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent, Nancy, but I, I do think, you know, if we could, you know, once again, capture a renewable energy grant, and there's, there's some, some, some area where we don't need, where we could put a solar array, it excites me. You know, Kelly and I were talking the other day, uh, you recently went up to, um, Pigeon Creek Park. Where there's a cross-country ski loop.
Oh, yeah. Beautiful little lodge, so they have rentals there, so then, I mean, you think about, I mean, there's so many people from the Detroit and Chicago areas that are looking for things to do in the winter. So can we use this as a way to bring in more things that drive the economy in the winter, but also with the bend that we want it for locals, you know, that we want access to things as well.
That's a good idea. Little funny tidbit, this place at one point was a, the land used by a snowmobile club, apparently. There was a snowmobile club operating there, so there are some old snowmobile.
Yeah, and with, in designs like this, there's no reason we can't integrate solar, you know, working within trails, you know, and do more like informational signs, saying, this is what's happening here. You know, we can marry the, all these ideas in a beautiful, beautiful way, you know.
ODC does a great job of it.
They do a great job.
And Scott currently uses it for a lot of the, uh, yard waste and.
That's what I'm saying, like, if we develop like a composting system where we, we make our own soil, I mean, we've got kind of cool things that could happen.
So, yes, it's, uh, once, that's kind of why I'm saying multi, multi. I think there's a lot of opportunity, because you, you, we are like this tight little developed out island, uh, along the lakeshore. But now we've got this other thing that we've, haven't really leveraged in decades, that could suddenly, you know, be the sort of engine room that you, you know, you don't really see, but still an amenity for people, and, you know.
And I'm happy to share my update too, so I came before council, I don't know, maybe three or four months ago now, with Sagatuck Rec. And how we've really outgrown what, um, the offerings are, and it's a good thing, it's because the community is using them, and the, the program has grown so much. And, you know, this is only two miles from the high school, and there's a lot of issues with, um, utilization of the ball field there. So once, once the Blue Star, Blue Star Trail goes in, and these kids can actually bike and get there themselves in a very safe manner, I mean, there's a lot of different uses for it, so that, that could be very cool too, as far as the use for the community.
Well, just to build on what you said, Scott, I mean, I'm totally supportive of like a vision of us becoming super like the sustainable community, and, you know, and, and, and yet, you know, keeping all the natural aspects and getting rid of the invasive, so it's all good.
I, I, I think it benefits everyone from the, the, the people that are in the tourist business, uh, you know, to suddenly, I mean, I think these people do select vacations based on, you know, is my vacation gonna be sustainable, is it gonna be, can I be green?
More so now than ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in a project like this, I think that instead of having a committee, I think we all need to be part of this. This is big, I mean, whereas opposed to the other ones, we can go where we feel that our strengths are, this is big.
It also lends itself, I think, to a staged approach, you know, I think, I think we can identify some, some quick hits, you know, I, I think, you know, working with the, with the school, we could probably come up with a cross-country course.
My kids are runners, and it, we always had to go somewhere else, I mean, that would be really cool to have something like that there, really cool.
I think a field trip there sooner than later.
Yeah, that's a great idea. It's a great idea.
I think we'll do that, once, once, what, once hunting season's over, right?
You know, there's definitely a lot of potential, but one thing I'd like you to keep in mind too, is that, you know, when you introduce human beings to nature, there is a maintenance element to it. So, a, and, and my question has always kind of been, well, you know, what, like, the public work staff, I mean, you know, even empty and trash out there, I, I guess I would seek some clarity on how that would work, you know, is it right that city taxpayers pay for a level of maintenance on a township property? I, I'm not sure how that would work, but I'm, I'm certainly curious about it, but there's definitely gonna be an, an element of maintenance that cannot be overlooked, otherwise it's gonna get destroyed.
Good point, Scott, certainly a part of the discussion.
I, I, I think, uh, I hope this is okay with you all, I mean, I think we're, I, I kind of expected this was gonna be a really big juicy meeting, because of just all this exciting stuff to talk about, but I do wanna be respectful to all your time and also staff, so should we?
Yeah, let's, let's wrap this up, let's just have, what, next slide is a real quick, quick conversation about grant opportunities. Uh, John, uh, I think you, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, John Moxie's familiar with these grants, it's smart, the Spark. We already talked, you don't have to talk about ARPA, John, um, already touched on that, and as, as far as Alligan County being better resourced in, in many different ways, which is wonderful, um, but maybe the public spaces and community spaces grant as well, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, the, um, so starting with Sparks, Sparks is a unique opportunity, uh, kind of stemming from some of the COVID relief money, basically doing, um, not just parks, but any public space, uh, basically improvements, placemaking type things. Uh, the grant period just opened yesterday, so the details are still a little bit fuzzy. Uh, there's a webinar on Friday that we'll be attending to, to kind of get a little more meat on the bone, hopefully. But, uh, your, I think the, the city's job is to lots of different opportunities of where you could go, obviously, we want to put a, a good application forward, so I think the city's job is to kind of think about what is, what is our number one priority, it, what, you know, whether it's Mount Baldhead, Village Square, Airport, you, whatever it is, let's, let's focus hard on that for this specific grant, uh, opportunity, and then hit it, you know, as hard as we can, basically. Um, so that's, that's the Spark Grant, uh, more, more to come soon.
Sorry, John, real quick, just, Mr. Chair, some sensitivity, like the playground, for example, like depending on the grant cycle, perhaps that's not the, because that's a priority for us, and we want to get something done sooner rather than later, so we'll have to pay close attention to the grant cycle, and so that will dictate kind of where we would focus our energy with these funds.
And you feel like you're resourced well enough now to have staff kind of identify and say, yeah, let's really not miss the deadline on this one.
Correct.
Do we know the grant cycle, next grant cycle on that one?
So there, there are actually three, uh, bites at the apple for, for Spark, uh, the first one is this year, and then there will be two, uh, next year. So, um, obviously, the more times we can hit it, you know, if we don't hit the first one, obviously try again the next two.
Well, this year would be due by the end of the year.
Yeah, they've, they've told us, uh, that, that it's gonna be open six to eight weeks, so we're anticipating the application will be due yet this year.
And then the grant award would be?
Awards would probably be early next year, and, and usually, this is kind of tied to the DNR has a, has a annual grant cycle. Uh, so they're, they're tying it loosely to that, so I would think we'll have the same three years to kind of use the money that, that, uh, a DNR project would.
That, that being said, is what I'm experiencing, and John, I'm sure you're experiencing the same with your other clients, is that um, state staff is overwhelmed with processing these grants, and so even though they announce like, you know, we're gonna issue this grant by such a, such and such a date, it's really not happening, so. Again, I, I, I guess my point is like, if we need to get this, for example, like, we need to get this playground fixed. And so we wouldn't want to apply for a grant, they were like waiting to get these monies to, to get this job done, we should focus on something that's a little more long-term or different vision is what I'm saying.
I, I think, from my perspective, and I'm open to suggestion, I, I, I would like us to, if we can, to have an application, and for each of these, each of these rounds, these three rounds, is there anything that we, we would consider to be kind of low hanging fruit that we, we could get with for this first round, anything that comes to mind?
I know, a, a lot of these grants want to, if, if it's from a, a municipality, to have it had a public hearing on whatever it is that you're wanting to do, is there anything we've already had public hearings on, um, because otherwise it seems like a big thing to move forward by the end of the year.
Right, right, that always impacts the schedule, uh, for sure, uh, no, I don't believe there's anything specific that has had, you know, kind of a, a broad public input yet, um, other than, uh, you know, obviously, we've been talking about Mount Baldhead for decades now. So that's probably had, input at a number of those steps.
But it's an exciting new opportunity, I'm not trying to be negative, I just want to be realistic and like. Moving some, some, the playground at.
Yeah, no, if, if one of our staff thinks we can get across the line soonest, I mean, yeah, yeah, okay, sure, sure. Because there's other opportunities coming down the road, so, but I, I'd hate to miss one.
Yeah, no, it's exciting, we'll, we'll have to pick the right one.
Yep, right, for sure, and the, the public spaces, community spaces, right, I don't, that, that is part of Spark, uh, that's some of the scope that's in Spark, I don't know if there's a different opportunity, I guess I'm not.
I thought it was separate, but I'll, I'll circle back to that, okay, I mean, I guess the, the main point is that there's lots of dollars coming in. Um, exciting opportunity for infrastructure and, and public spaces, so, um, good timing with this committee, and, um, we're excited about it.
Yeah, for sure.
I have, I have a question, so Fleas and Vanderbrink is, um, uh, the engineering firm, but you would also, that's who we would look toward to maybe take the lead in grant writing?
We have, yeah, we, we write a lot of grants, we have landscape architects on staff, so, you know, parks are kind of still in our wheelhouse.
Great, and we can certainly collab if there's anyone that, um, specializes in grant writing.
Another volunteer's been drafted.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, the, so, I've worked with partnerships before, where in, we, volunteers will do more of the narrative, right, some of what I call fluffy stuff, um, which is very important, right, in grant writing. And then the engineer firm will come in and just do like the very technical stuff, um, so it's a collaboration and we can work together on that.
Does that wrap us up on, um?
That's it.
Number six, great, um, that takes us to number seven, reviewing next steps, I think we sort of did a, a, quite a bit of that in terms of people showing some interest in some of the work groups. Um, so I think, I think the homework would be, those of you that have found it, work groups that you're interested in, uh, maybe start to come back to me or Ryan on how you'd like to staff up a work group. I don't think we're bound by city residency as a criteria, it certainly wasn't in the, in the radar station project, so I can think of, uh, both, uh, you know, in, in a couple, all three of these cases, I can think of people you'd want to probably leverage or, or bring in, and, and to create your little, go ahead, Nancy.
I just had a question about the Blue Star Trail.
Yeah.
So we didn't, nobody raised their hand on that one, I see, I have some interest in it, as being on the board, um, of the friends. A, is that, that's, would that be considered a conflict at all?
No.
Okay, and then, yeah, so would that be, would it be okay to have some of the people who are also on the friends involved in this, or would that, you know what I mean, I, I know we would want community members besides that, so just, and you don't have to answer that, I guess.
Let me marinate on that one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, marinate on that one, you've been deep in the Blue Stars Trail, the tri-community cooperation on that, so, so I think, but, I mean, unless anybody has any sort of questions on next steps, I think we kind of, I think we gotta know where we're going, this was a pretty deep dive, a lot of stuff in one, our second meeting, but I think it was a good conversation. Um, so I think we're there on that, um, that takes us to public comment, once again, uh, this could be on anything, and three minutes, stop clock, or shot clock, if you will, um, anybody have anything they would like to share one last time? Oh, Barry, thank you for, uh, for sitting through this. You have the floor.
Uh, Barry Johnson, City of Sagatuck. I kind of jumped in because I wondered if you, uh, found in the basement the plans for Michigan State for Mount Baldhead. Uh, you know, I think Ryan said to get, we do a lot of things and they get mothballed, I'm glad that you found them in the basement, so. Just wanted to give a little historical perspective, and some of the original plans, um, they were going to remove the pavilion down at the bottom of Mount Baldhead, uh, because it's kind of rough, needed a roof and everything, but there was a huge public outcry from the schools, parents, family reunion, scouting that do use that pavilion for uh, outdoor activity, uh, potlucks and things like that. So, uh, when you look at that pavilion, it's pretty rough, but the outcry was, don't, don't lose it. Um, so pretty good plan, and then, uh, also the, uh, airport property. Uh, the schools came to us several, many years ago, and, uh, they had an incredible uh, sports complex all drawn up, and it was, uh, really, they presented it. In the end, it was too expensive, but maybe you can find those plans, because there were soft, back-to-back softball fields, I believe there was a cross-country uh, running route, um, it was quite. It was quite extensive, a sports, community sports facility would be the envy of the area. So those plans are buried somewhere in the basement too, so. That's all I got, I just wanted to give a little historical perspective.
Thank you very much, Barry, thanks for, for joining us. Anyone else, public comment? Oh, Scott's gonna jump back in, alright, go for it.
So hey, Scott, Scott Herbert, Public Works Superintendent, I just wanted to give a quick update, not really a huge deal, but it's kind of cool. I did meet earlier this week with, or I'm sorry, late last week with a couple members of the Alligan County Conservation District, Kalen Jablonski and Emily Reichow, and they're, the, they were approved for a grant that basically their goal is to go around and find communities where they can donate and construct like fishing line, monofilament dispense, disposal containers, and one of the requirements of the, the grant, and for that, for us to get some ourselves, again, like Douglas has, is that basically we, we, we mount the container somewhere and then Public Works will go through and, and filter out whatever trash was thrown in there and just take the fishing line, and then they provide envelopes and we mail it in for, to be recycled properly, so absolutely no reason why we shouldn't do that. We talked about maybe doing that at Mount Baldhead Park where people fish. Also Coughlin Park, Wicks Park, and then possibly Willow Park for those, for those receptacles. And then another thing that they do too is they do like cleanup stations, so they'll have like little buckets and then the litter claws. I don't know what they're called, but we, we thought maybe an appropriate place would be out at Oval Beach on the north end, because so many people walk, they park on the north end of the beach, they walk to the pier generously pick up litter, and if we can just give them some supplies to do that a little more efficiently, then I think it would only be to our benefit. So we're planning on moving forward with that, unless there's any huge objection why we shouldn't, but I don't see any, so thank you.
Thanks, Scott, thanks. I think that wraps up public comment then, which takes us to member closing comments, we'll just, we'll start with you Nancy, any?
Just one thing I wanted to inquire about, you've talked about the invasive species and that's an ongoing project, and so we didn't have that on our list as something to get involved in, but if you were looking for anyone to get involved in that, I would be so interested. Oh, and just one other thing, that we talked about just infrastructure and sidewalks and that kind of thing, so this is probably long-term. But there are areas up, where I live up on the hill, where we don't have, you can mark a whole street, you know, city street, and there's no sidewalk, not on either side, and I find that to be, you know, a problem. So I, I don't think it's an urgent problem, but just one that I thought, you know, we should get out there, that it seemed to me that any city block should have a sidewalk, at least some of the type of street.
Lots of exciting projects, I'm glad that there's some actual, something that we can get started on right away. I just want to clarify one thing, when we were talking about the airport property, did you say because it's township property or surrounded by township property? It's in the town, it's city-owned, but it's surrounded by township.
Yep, it's owned by us, yeah.
I just think there's a lot of momentum, and I'm really excited about the forthcoming projects.
Great.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thanks. And I, I just want to. Yeah, I just want to thank you all, I mean, I think, you know, it was a ninety-minute marathon, but I mean, I think really generated a lot of good talking, a lot, made a lot of good connections, so I really appreciate you all coming. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kelly, second by Glenna, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.
I don't know how city councils do all this.
I'm, I'm leaving.